Oh, good. No one is here.
Yeah, I guess we're all here.
Somebody changed my chair.
Did you ride Michael?
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, you got a different chair. Good.
And somebody did it for me. I don't know who did that. But whoever did it, thank you. Kevin, I'm not sure.
I think it was Kevin.
You think so? It could be. I'll have to think.
Thank you.
I'm going to. We're a little uneven.
It's the little things, you know.
But now your arms don't match.
That's okay.
All right, I'm gonna gavel us in.
It's okay.
Like to call the meeting to order. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Supervisor Moore.
Here.
Councilwoman McNamara.
Here.
Councilwoman Iacilli.
Here.
Councilwoman Powell.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Martel.
Here.
Thank you. All right, well, let's start the meeting with our review of the draft agenda. Remarkably, no public hearings. So let's just get right to it. I know, this is a first for me anyway. Let's go forward with the resolutions.
Town Board Resolution eight fourteen twenty twenty five. This is the notice of public hearing to enact Chapter three, I'm sorry, two thirty-three entitled tree preservation. Supervisor Moore and myself met with some folks internally about this and we will likely be withdrawing this one and putting in a new, a newer version. We still have, we still want to review things with Janice and we'll go from there.
Thank you, Michael.
You can't hear me?
So that's withdrawn.
It will be withdrawn and we'll go from there, yeah.
Thank you. Town Board Resolution ID number five zero four two one to authorize the purchase of roofing products and services from Roof Services of New York Etecta America Company LLC using Omni Partners contract. Town Board Resolution ID number five zero three eight six, co-sponsored by Councilwoman McNamara to authorize the purchase of a trailer from American Cargo Group Trailers LLC using Sourcewell contract.
Town Board Resolution ID five zero four four six, authorize purchases of fuel supplier, sales management, and delivery from Tac Energy LLC, DBA Tac Energy using Sourcewell contract.
Town Board Resolution five zero four one two, authorize purchase of ground maintenance equipment solution from Cobra Tractor Corp. using Sourcewell contract.
Oh, maybe. Town Board Resolution ID number five zero three two zero, to authorize purchases of industrial hoses and fittings from Moreland Hose and Belting Corp. using the Suffolk County contract. Town Board Resolution ID number five zero four one zero to authorize purchases of online marketplace from Amazon dot com services LLC doing businesses Amazon Business using Omni Partners contract. Town Board Resolution ID number five zero four four zero, co-sponsored by the entire board to authorize the supervisor to sign any and all documents pertaining to a grant application for the Hampton West Park Revitalization Grant. This is the second grant that we're gonna put in for. Town Board Resolution ID number five zero two six three, co-sponsored by Councilmember Iacilli to authorize the purchase of tree removal, stump grinding, and trimming services using Town of Brookhaven contract with Looks Great Services, Inc.
Town Board Resolution ID five oh four three five, co-sponsored with Councilwoman McNamara, authorize the supervisor to execute an agreement with H two M Architects Engineers Lancer Vay, A Tal to provide professional engineering design services related to upgrades to plant number two. Town Board Resolution ID five oh four four one, also co-sponsored with Councilwoman McNamara, authorize supervisor to sign a contract extension with H two M Architects and Engineers to provide professional engineering services for upgrade of SCADA system and upgrade tank monitoring.
These next few might all sound the same, but they're for different buildings. It's Town Board Resolution ID number five zero four one nine, authorize the supervisor to execute an agreement with Pi Barker Fine and Safety LLC DBA Brisco Protective to provide fire alarm system monitoring and maintenance at Southampton Town Hall, one sixteen Hampton Road. Town Board Resolution ID number five zero four two zero, to authorize the supervisor to execute an agreement with Pi Barker Fine and Safety LLC DBA Brisco Protective to provide fire alarm system monitoring, daily test signal and inspection, and burglar alarm system monitoring at the Hampton Bay's Town Annex, Hampton Bay's Community Center Building, twenty-five and twenty-seven Palm Quad Avenue, Hampton Bay's. Town Board Resolution ID number five zero four two three, to authorize the supervisor to execute an agreement with Pi Barker Fine and Safety LLC DBA Brisco Protective to provide security alarm system panic button monitoring at the Southampton Town Hall, one sixteen Hampton Road. Town Board Resolution ID number five zero four two two, to recall and amend Town Board Resolution twenty twenty four dash eighty, authorize the supervisor to execute an agreement with Pi Barker Fine and Safety LLC DBA Brisco Protective for burglar temperature alarm monitoring, parts and labor services at one sixteen Hampton Road Town Hall Data Processing Center. Town Board Resolution ID number five zero four two four, to recall and amend Town Board Resolution twenty twenty four dash eighty-one, authorize the supervisor to execute an agreement with Fire Protection Service Corporation, DBA as Brisco Protective LLC for monitoring and maintenance of the burglar system alarm at five eighty-five Bridge Hampton Sag Harbor Turnpike, the Bridge Hampton Community Center.
Town Board Resolution ID five zero three six one, twenty twenty, oh, co-sponsored with Councilwoman Martel, twenty twenty five notice to bidders for quail run test boring.
Town Board Resolution ID number five zero four three six, to amend the twenty twenty five budget for various departments. Town Board Resolution ID number five zero three nine five, to appoint Labor Management Committee for twenty twenty five. Town Board Resolution ID number five zero four two six, to authorize the town attorney to accept a settlement from Geico Insurance Company for damage to a Southampton Town Police Department vehicle.
Town Board Resolution ID five zero four four two, waive a portion of the portable stage fee for Sag Harbor American Music Festival. Town Board Resolution ID five zero four two five, waive a portion of the showmobile fees for the San Gennaro East of the Hamptons.
Town Board Resolution ID number five zero three five four, to, resolution to accept the demolition bond in connection with the demolition of an existing dwelling located at sixty-five Dave U Drive North Sea. Town Board Resolution ID number five zero three nine four, which is the twenty twenty five part-time salaries. Town Board Resolution five zero three seven six, to accept the resignation of Diane Durner, Administrative Assistant in the Town Attorney's Office.
Told her I was very upset by that.
I know, I just saw that. Town Board Resolution ID number five zero three seven five, to accept the retirement of David Santura, a police officer in the Town Police Department. Town Board Resolution ID number five zero three five three, to appoint Sean Kearney to Fire Marshal One in Public Safety.
Town Board Resolution ID five zero three five seven, co-sponsored with Supervisor Moore, notice of public hearing to consider establishing a park district known as the East Quad Park District in the hamlet of East Quad. And that public hearing is set for August twelfth, twenty twenty five.
Town Board Resolution ID number five zero three nine zero, a notice of public hearing to consider historic landmark designation of the site recognized as the Methodist Point Historical Site, located at ten forty Flanders Road in Flanders, and we'll have a work session on that on July twenty-fourth.
Cindy, could you please add me to that?
Sure.
And myself, too, please. Town Board Resolution. Town Board.
Cindy, Cindy, I want to know if you want to be added to that historic preservation.
Sure.
The whole board.
Okay, done.
Please.
Town Board Resolution five zero four three nine, notice of public hearing to consider the acquisition of a historic preservation and conservation easement on the property located at one forty-nine South Country Road in the hamlet of Remsenberg Spionk and amend the community preservation project plan and CPF management plan to include said property.
Town Board Resolution ID number five zero four four seven, notice of public hearing to consider the Town of Southampton Highway Department Water Quality Improvement Projects for twenty twenty five Community Preservation Fund, twenty percent water quality improvement project funding.
Cindy, could you add me to that, please?
I wonder if we should have a work session just to go through all of those or, well, at least we need someone from Highway to be here to explain them all. Town Board Resolution ID number five zero four two nine, notice of public hearing to accept a deed of residential fee from Blair K. Gaza for a property to be maintained as open space located at West Hampton, Suffolk County tax map number as indicated pursuant to Southampton Town Code Section two four four dash four, obtaining a development rights certificate in Section two four seven General Municipal Law of the State of New York. Town Board Resolution ID number five zero three five five, notice of public hearing to consider historic landmark designation of the site recognized as the Nathan Topping Cook Family Home, located at four three nine Hay Ground Road in Bridge Hampton. And we'll have the work session on that on July fourth, twenty-fourth as well. Town Board Resolution ID number five zero four three eight, co-sponsored by the entire board to authorize the acquisition of a grant of historic preservation and conservation easement and grant of restrictive use easement and accompanying public access and benefit agreement on the property located at seventy-six Main Street, West Hampton Beach Performing Arts Center, Inc., Village of West Hampton Beach, and to amend the CPF project plan and CPF management and stewardship plan to include the property.
Town Board Resolution ID five zero three three zero, co-sponsored Supervisor Moore, resolution accepting drainage easements in connection with estates at Remsenberg.
That's it? No add-ons? Easy.
We're missing one. I think it's gonna be a walk. With Mark, he's supposed to be doing the contract to go out the bid for.
Oh, the notice to bid for the Community Center? Yeah.
That's very important.
It'll be a walk-on. Yeah, why don't you come on up because the next topic is the, well, updates from Nick Jimenez, capital projects manager.
Let us close out this question.
Do you have a spare? Why don't you have a seat and tell us about the West Hampton Community Center, the walk-ons? You said there'll be four.
Sure, so.
So because this project exceeds one point five million dollars, we have to abide by New York State bricks law, which requires us to split them into four prime contracts. One for general construction, one for impact construction, one for plumbing, and one for electric, electrical. So it's, it's one bid, but it's four bids. So then because it's four bids, you have to notice four bids. So it'll be four resolutions to notice each respective.
Okay, that makes sense.
That'll happen on Tuesday. So I am here today to give you all an update on the Town Board Room, renovations, improvements, what have you. You'll see as you go through the set here, we're extremely limited, obviously. Everybody was here that day. We're extremely limited with what can be done in this room. But you have almost infinite options downstairs. So you'll find one concept for the room we're all sitting in now and five for downstairs. Michael Guido, our architect. He met the, he met the requirements. It raises the dais, provides a fixed-in-place chairlift over on this side of the room, but it does cut the seating back, depending on your opinion, significantly, or at least almost half. So we go from fifty seats to thirty-two seats to make the accommodations in this room. Leave that up to your considerations.
This one doesn't make sense to me.
Up on the second floor?
Yeah, it's not worth it.
Yeah, like I said, just by raising this dais and having to put the chairlift and the space that's required for that, we really, it's a small room to begin with. Cost for this, depending on how far we go, if we went minimal, would be in the area two hundred thousand. If we replaced wall coverings, carpet, new chairs, you know, soup to nuts, be around three hundred thousand. These are estimates to these numbers.
Can you repeat that, please?
Sure.
The number startled me.
So to do the basic millwork, keep the chairs, keep the carpet, keep the wall coverings, give you guys a new dais, do all that carpentry work that's associated with that, purchase a chairlift, it's in the area of around two hundred thousand.
Look like two chairlifts.
One chairlift, on the right-hand side.
What's this says over here? I thought it's so small, but it looks like it said chairlift.
Yeah, you have the thirty-four by fifty-four cha, oh, that's, you have the option to.
Put it there.
Yeah, if you wanted to wheel it into that.
Oh, one chairlift, but it's optional.
Yeah, you either do it permanently affixed, or if you wanted to wheel, if you want to get a mobile unit, it could be wheeled.
I think that when we had these discussions, we had originally looked at this and were hoping that we could try to make these changes with keeping the seating as is, and I know that that was the question, are we, would we be able to do that? But it doesn't seem that that's gonna be the case. It looks like we're eliminating a whole row, right?
We lose in the first two rows.
The first two rows.
I think just one. One.
Yeah.
But that's still, I mean, you know, there are moments where it's pretty full and, you know, you can't sit in here and have to go to the overflow room, so it defeats the whole purpose of what we're trying to do.
Which leads me to second through the sixth pages.
This one looks nice.
Downstairs, like I said, we have almost infinite possibilities down here. It's a huge space. And I'll guide you through some of these. They all essentially do the same, the same basic improvements where you're going to have a separated raised dais from the audience and it creates a conference room behind the stage. I'll wait for the supervisor to return.
I'll just say briefly on these, because I've already looked at them, the ones where they are on the sides tend to not make sense to me because part of the reason for doing this was safety concerns and having multiple ways to leave.
To get out, yep.
So.
It would, um.
Wait, say that again?
These, there's only one way for everybody to file out of here. There's no secondary exit, whereas the ones that are here, you have two ways out of the dais.
I see what you're saying, okay.
Well, you do, when they're on the side, you do have the exit to the exterior, but you can't get back to the building. So you could exit.
There's still an exit there.
Yeah, you can exit into the room, which obviously you wouldn't want to exit into the room if you were trying to get out, but you could exit, if it's on the right side, you could exit to the right into your parking area and.
No, but I'm talking about leaving either side of the dais.
Oh, I got what you're saying. Yes, you could only go to the right side or the left side, correct.
Okay.
That's why we.
Now, when, you know, I know that we're looking at different iterations of, of the design here, but the chairs, can, can we make sure that the chairs are accommodating as much as possible? You know, in the sense of being wide enough and, you know, I'm not saying they have to be like luxury seating, but, you know, these seats are very narrow, you know?
Yeah, well, these are original nineteen seventy to the building, so they don't likely meet even the basic standards that you would do to that. But understood. And we have, we have, again, possibilities with what kind of chairs we're looking for.
Sure, yeah, thank you.
So with that, I'll go through them. Cindy, I think raises a really good point there that both of the, both of the alternatives on the side, that would be option one and option four and five. Four and five are very similar, it just shifts a couple of things around on the dais. But you would only have one exit to the right-hand side in option one and to the left-hand side in option four and five.
And also on four and five, you also have anybody entering the space enters directly in front of the dais.
Yes, all the seating is kept to the right of the entrance on four and five, but they would be right in front of the dais.
Because everybody exiting, like while we're having meetings, would have to exit right in front of us.
What, uh, could you just explain what the goal is?
Somebody's hitting the.
No longer having the meetings here up on the same level as our offices and moving them down to the auditorium.
Well, the goal of this whole project, I believe, was the board's desire to have more of a formal dais as opposed to a table to raise you up above the gallery, if you will, so that there's a little bit more of a separation and a security or enhanced security features and then possibly install a bar in this room again to.
As well as it being large enough to accommodate the full.
More people, yeah.
Yeah, so that was, I'm backing up to this room, right where we started. So we started with trying to make the improvements to this room. We see what those improvements would entail. Since these improvements are likely not ideal, we do have that space in the first floor that could accommodate a.
It's a totally underutilized room. I mean, that's first and foremost. Beautiful room, but underutilized and, and I, and I think too, like just from an ADA standpoint, when people are coming into, I know we have an elevator, but when people are coming into the building, they're, they only have to now maneuver to the first floor instead of having to go up an elevator. Sometimes the elevator does not work. We know last year it was down a couple of times. I think that if we're seeking to have the most inclusive space as much as possible from an ADA standpoint, I think making the boardroom downstairs is a much more viable option. And by the way, it looks like we have a conference room, too. Does this conference room have windows?
There's one window in the back.
That's great.
We could make it a little wider, maybe. We can maybe put some transom in, so that it transoms in.
I just, I just, when we, when we had, to your point, when we had, when I started, the elevator was being retrofitted to go up to the third floor and we ended up having to have our meetings down here in this room. And then when we did that, the acoustics were not set up to have a meeting down there and recording wasn't set up down there. So it was really a problem. And every time that the board has tried to have bigger meetings and bigger hearings, they've tried to hold them in that room and then the sound doesn't work. The recording quality is horrible and it's, you're now having a bigger, you're having it down there because it's a very important topic that a lot of people want to weigh in on and then you're recording and your sound is horrible, so it kind of almost defeats the purpose.
So that's a good point. Anything we did do, if, if ultimately the boardroom were to be relocated into the auditorium, we would have to, of course.
Upgrade it.
Well, yeah, you would need the AV improvements and also the acoustic improvements.
You know, if we're gonna spend all that money, it would be upgraded, so the problems, what she said, it'd be all solved and it'd be a qualify, it'd be a quality room where we could be proud and have a hundred people come in instead of having people next door or down the hall.
Or in the basement.
It's also, people don't have to come up and then they're wandering around.
I was gonna get to that point, so.
It's, it's for the safety worries of people up on the second floor. You don't need the people up, up there. They're down on the first floor.
Yeah, you would have direct access to the accessible entrance on the first floor of Town Hall. Obviously, we would leave it up to logistics, but you would have the main entrance and you would have that side accessible entrance, but you could prevent people through barricades or whatever, what do they call those, little velvet rope lines, from going to other parts of the building. There's no reason, if there's a night meeting, that somebody should be on the second floor, correct? There's no reason they should be down by Sunday's office, for instance, or in the building department for that matter. Bathrooms would be right outside of this room as well.
Or in Jim's office.
Or in Jim's office, sure.
How are you gonna prevent them from just walking down that hallway?
We would have a guard at the.
Well, not only that, like they have things like in, I know in the school when they had meetings, they have like the, the, they have like, it's like an accordion thing that goes like a wall that comes out, but it locks and then nobody can go past that barricade.
If we wanted to go that far, we could go that far, but there's, there's impediments to, you know, access to areas that we don't want people to access, we could implement.
What about the ceiling? It's so high.
So the ceiling, we would keep the height of the ceiling? Well, there's options, right?
It's dropped.
You could drop a ceiling. You could make it lower. I think that would kind of, I think that would be a negative to the ambiance of the room.
Acoustic panels that hang, right?
Suspend the hanging acoustic panels that direct the sound back down onto the audience, kind of like you would see in a, in a more recently renovated school auditorium or concert halls and, and things like that.
And if we did do this room, I think it would get used more often for different people, different people would want to use it.
Sure. It would be a, you know, much more larger and more accommodating space for a crowd, that's for sure.
And the community would might want to end up using it.
So at least, I guess, what I'm hoping to leave here is just a general consensus from the board so that I can give some, some guidance to the consultant to which one of these to dig a little deeper in and I'm guessing.
I just wanna know, did we really pay, whether, the building department seems like there's, really could use some more space. Did anybody talk about whether they would be relocated there and I just don't want to jump on something that, you know, like I thought there was a plan that was being considered to reconfigure the first floor in respect to the building department. Said something about that?
That was moving some offices downstairs and moving one office to the new building in Hampton Bays.
That has been kicked around, relocating the building department into that room. I mean, I could show you guys the plans. I don't have them with me today.
Hasn't the previous administration moved offices into that auditorium on a temporary basis?
Yes, the inspectors were there.
And it wasn't very viable.
Well, because the ceiling is so.
Yeah, it's a cube farm in that huge room. It was an echo chamber. It was cold in the winter. But they were there and the inspectors were there on a temporary basis and I believe they put the inspectors there because their job function places them outside of the building.
Is it gonna be cold in the winter for us?
No, so when you renovate it, you take those considerations into account. That's, yes, don't think of, we look at that room and we all know the negatives that it, that it has right now at the moment, but that's what, those would be addressed in the renovations for either a boardroom or even if it were to be the building department, obviously.
So you want to break down the cost on the downstairs?
So downstairs is a wide swing. And again, that's why I said I'm hoping for a consensus so that I can have the consultant dig a little deeper into the alternatives you prefer, but we're looking anywhere from half a million to two million to do downstairs, so five hundred to seven fifty K.
That's not bad when you consider up here is two fifty. I was expecting a lot more because of the two fifty number.
Your tokens, flooring, the ceiling panels, wall treatments. The more expensive option, well, you guys actually, let me put that, I'll go six hundred thousand to seven fifty K because the, what I'm getting a sense is the preferred option is having you guys with your backs to the stage and that does require lowering the stage a little bit right now for what's there. It's not, um, not that we can't do it, but that would be an expense that you wouldn't have.
Which one are we looking at, please?
Two and three. And three.
This, two and three seems to rearrange a lot.
Yes.
Yeah, why don't we, you wouldn't just put us up on the stage?
It'd be too high.
The chairs are rearranged.
High for the, the gallery below.
Because when we had the meeting in there, we just put up like one set of risers and put the tables and chairs on that set of risers and we had the stage to our back and it was fine.
Okay. Again, we can, these are all, these are all issues that you explore.
Yeah, we did, we did when we had it, when we had our meeting there, right, Rex? Remember? We had two steps up to a riser and then the tables and chairs were set up along the stage and the stage was to our backs and it was fine.
I think we need to be a little bit higher than that. We did have trouble seeing the back.
But I don't, I don't think that stage being behind us was an issue.
No, not at all.
Especially if it becomes a wall.
The one, the one meeting we had, we had it up against the, we were up against the wall.
Yeah.
You were here.
Is there any way to get into the basement from here?
Um, yeah, both of these, there's a stair on the right-hand side that goes down to the basement and a stair on.
So we could always go through the basement and then come up to the second floor.
You can and there's, it's kind of catacombs because we do records management back in there, so you can go down and you can pop out in other areas. There's actually a door down in the vestibule that comes out at one point.
And you would also have sole access to those two exterior exits, obviously the one to the parking area and the one to the, let's say, the, the main parking lot.
Yeah, I think that if we're gonna do this, that we should leave this room alone.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not to do both of them.
I mean, I think we could still do like work sessions in here.
Yep.
This could become more of a.
Dry cleaner, they would really refresh them. The curtains, if you set them.
They're gone.
I think you could, they haven't been, they haven't been washed since.
I think we can get new curtains up beside the curtains. I think everything in here would be okay for like work sessions.
Well, yeah, that's what I'm saying, like they would, might refresh them.
Even, even planning board, when they didn't have hearings and stuff like that, too, I mean, could still leave them here.
Nick, um, so just based on the, you know, what the, the visuals here, it looks like the option one drawings would be. Less expensive because it looks like there's less modifications, um, happening to the room. Um, whereas option two and three seem to be, there are more modifications. You're taking out the stage. I mean. I get Cindy's point that it looks better, um, and you have that, the two exits. You still have two exits in option one, but it's just not, one exit is to another area of Town Hall, right? And then the other exit is just out of the building.
No, you can, you can leave to the left.
It's the actual behind the dais. So if you look at option, start on option one, right? So in the event that someone were to trap your exit, there would be nowhere for you to go. You can only go from, in this case, to the right. That's, I didn't notice that myself, though.
Wait, are we on the stage in option one?
That escapes me right away.
Which one?
Hard thing I thought of.
Stage is up top.
Please, stage is right here.
That's a conference room, I thought.
Yeah, the stage is.
It's right here.
Yeah, the stage, we're not, they turned, turned over here.
In option one, this is the stage.
So we're on the stage?
No, this is, no, this is a new stage.
Raised dais. So option one, every option, you're on the raised, a raised dais, but option.
Option, we remove the stage?
No, no, we just turn, they turn there from this way to this way.
So, yes.
The stage, the original stage is still here.
Where is the, um, I guess I'm, my bearings are.
Where is it?
The original stage is right here. See, see the stairs going up?
When you enter from, let's say you're, you're checking in to the security desk.
They take this and just.
Past the building department. Is this the entry point?
Creating a new room, creating a new conference room?
So that conference room will be.
Go ahead.
That conference room will be behind what is now the stage. And that's an option. I mean, perhaps.
That can be done down the line, too, yeah. But the problem is too, the other thing I didn't notice on any of these plans. Is I guess that storage room or one of those storage rooms would have to be a CTV room. For all of the AV equipment.
This is, this is the, the twenty thousand foot look at it. This is not getting into electronics, obviously acoustic.
You're just asking about like a layout so that we can then hear it too.
Go deeper.
Speaking of CTV, I mean, are they gonna have duplicate equipment up here and down there? Because if we're gonna have planning and work sessions up here, but then.
This just stays the way it is.
Yep, with all the CTV, are we gonna buy, you know, all duplication of?
No, what's in there, um.
Equipment?
They could likely work in that room and still operate downstairs at the same time if they wanted, or vice versa. And that equipment could either be relocated to one of these rooms and they would work out of this room when they're up here.
That room is teeny tiny too.
Would give them a little more space.
Do you wanna invite Mr. Kevin or Andrew to?
Well, I mean, that's, we just need to think about a layout and then that's all logistical stuff after we decide which way we wanna lay this out, if we wanna lay this out.
Yeah, today we are, we are not setting anything in motion other than continuing to create a picture.
If we wanna go forward.
Unintended consequences, like having to outfit a new, um, CTV room.
And, and also when we're gonna do it, you're gonna upgrade everything where that stuff is old. You know, it's, we, it's all been patchma, patchmail upgrade. This is the opportunity, when we're gonna do this, everything's gonna be upgraded to the top. Or they can run wires down and use the same equipment, except you have different cameras, but the.
Correct. Once we arrive at a layout, we can get into the, the more nuanced AV, classical panels.
Does your estimate include all the cameras?
Yes.
Oh, that's good.
So Nick, I'm kinda leaning towards number two, but if we could, um, have a walkthrough downstairs, just to ask a couple of questions, that'd be great at some point.
Yeah, I'd like to do another walkthrough.
Well, I would like to send, if everybody is leaning towards option two.
Well, you have one, two.
I have two, too.
Are there less seats if you, I haven't counted them, but rather than going straight across, can you get more seats if you just go straight across with the seating? It's the same number, Phil?
Yeah.
I think it makes more sense because you're coming into the, the seating like an actual auditorium. It's nice.
I think the acoustics would likely be better in two since you have those other chairs are coming in.
There's extra aisles too for people to walk and get to their seats, which is important.
You're removing the stage though in number two?
It doesn't, so the stage would never be the stage anymore, correct? Now it's your dais, but it, it's lowering the, the height of the stage.
Right.
Where the dais is and then behind that would still be the scene level. So the level of the stage now behind your dais would remain. So it's not, it's not the entire.
Oh, I see, cause if we went in front of it, we would lose a lot of space.
Only, only thing I would try to do is, um, on number two, is some, to get off this, you, you, we have to come down and go off. And come up here. If you could put, if this is the same height, somehow put a door.
So access from the dais without, that's a good point.
Yeah, that way if, if there's, you know, one on each side, if there's something that we have to escape, you can go that way.
We can look into that.
It's number two?
Yeah, instead of going down this way.
Or even just have a door maybe directly into the conference room.
But with number one, you can keep the stage, you're saying, in case we wanted to use it for something?
Yeah, so.
I don't know what we would.
All the options with the dais on the left and the right, the stage stays exactly as it is today.
Coming into the room and you're seeing the seats on, like through the, like the side in option one, which is like, like counterintuitive. I feel like when you walk into an auditorium or any, any sort of like larger meeting room, you walk in, you wanna see that. Yeah, you're walking into the seating from the back rather than, like a movie theater, essentially, you would do that too, but. Coming in from the side is a little, seems counterintuitive. I mean, I'm sure that there are other setups.
Well, this is, this is kind of how, um, Southampton Village's boardroom is. So when you walk in and then you kinda like, you can't even really look for a seat. Because you're walking into people.
It's true, yeah.
Can you describe the differences between two and three, please?
The differences between two and three are simply the layout of those chairs. Bar is a little more straight in option three and then Nick's in at the end and option two, it's a little less.
Hitting your mic at the plants.
My mic is off. So the only difference between two and three is the layout of the audience chairs?
Correct.
Either straight or curved?
I kinda like the curve. What do you think?
If it's the same number, I like the curve better.
It allows us to see, allows them to see, the people to see.
These numbers, to Michael's point before, it depends on the furniture that we ultimately select. They can go up, they can go down. This is just a standard cad block.
You could also do folding chairs, right?
If you wanted to.
And then rearrange them for different meetings.
Correct.
I'm just saying, it's different layouts and different.
Touched on that last time where if you, if you, it's, it's, it's an option, but it's.
Well, because all of these ADA seating areas, you could put a folding chair in those areas at least.
I don't know if they're folding. They're, they're, but they're movable.
We could come up with something that is, I'll say semi-permanent in the sense that if and when you do wanna remove the chairs, the chairs can be removed. Other than folding chairs. And we had the discussion last time where if I become irate, I can pick up a folding chair.
I just, I just, you, you have that big, it's still, it's still like, cause then you're dedicating that big space to one use. And if you can move the seat somehow, you have a bigger room if you wanted to do something different in there.
Can I hear your remarks? So please speak back.
It wasn't anything you needed to hear.
We're talking about having some room for s- s- security.
See, that's very important. He wants to be safe.
I, I like option two.
We'll further explore option two. I will also speak with Janice and maybe you about the building department so we can get more of a. Idea, just so that's a, something you guys should consider. Cause if this becomes boardroom, that is no longer an option on the table. That's a bar, that's, that's the actual bar. So think of a courtroom.
It's a wall, a half wall.
Half wall.
Like the village.
So it prevents, theoretically, it prevents someone from charging to you. I mean, they could jump it, but.
Is there any way to take this, one of these windows and make it an emergency exit?
On this side with those HVAC units? I don't think so.
HVACs over here.
On this side?
Yeah, if I'm looking at.
So you're on the parking lot side?
I mean, in the case of an emergency, they could come through and go out the side door. If we had to clear out the building, I mean, that would still be an emergency exit.
Yeah, but if this, if you have a lot of people, it's a lot of people coming through here to navigate here. If we, if you take one of these windows and make it an emergency exit?
We would likely need some type of an area of refuge in here. In the event that this door, for whatever reason, was blocked and you could not exit through this door, you would have no accessible means of egress. Um, you have to traverse stairs to get out of the building, basically. So, yeah, we'll look into that.
Okay.
Where's the, uh, are these stairs up to the dais?
Yes.
So there's no handicap accessibility to?
There's a chairlift. Chairlift is just same thing, yep.
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't see it.
Is that a mobile one or a permanent one?
Either or.
It was hard for me to understand this layout, but now I do. Okay, I'm, I'm for two.
I'm for two. And I'm for two, if anyone's concerned.
Well, I was just gonna say, it actually, it's easier for the clerk as well to be able to come and go from. I know that, you know, it's, you know, it's not that much of a burden for the clerk right now, but I think it's, you know, when something has to be done. Um, the clerk's office is, is on the first floor, so it's more manageable for the clerk to come in and out.
This, and the, that clerk sits right here.
Correct. There is a podium, but we can put a podium.
I thought it was that box behind the swinging doors.
I was looking to the right, correct.
The podium?
The speakers.
Oh, yeah, in the center, behind the, behind those swinging things.
These doors most likely be, um, be locked.
Those doors can be electronically controlled.
So you'll have a button right here, like you have, you'll have a button to unlock these doors to let people in and out.
When Nick wants to come up and present to the board.
Yeah. If not, the people will speak right here.
I think this is a beautiful design.
It's a layout. It needs some, uh, refining, but it's, it's a good step one.
Yeah, I mean, just also too, I mean, we're talking about all of our voting going electronic and everything and, you know, that dais could be set up with all the electronics we need. If we wanna use, you know, get off of paper and actually join the current century and a lot of progress.
Yeah, that's actually a good point. Um, the Suffolk County Legislature, they do have computers, um, you know, uh, for all the eighteen legislative seats. And so that, you know, if we could equip that with, you know. Yep.
Yes.
Hopefully they'll be wireless.
So would you prefer computer?
I, I was just looking for somewhere where we could just put the wires through so we could plug in our laptops.
We have laptops.
I'm not looking for them to buy computers. We have, we just bring our laptops and just need people to plug them in.
I mean, we might be able to actually inset tablet type device in the table as well.
That'd be awesome.
Well, then meet with Sunday because if we're gonna do electronic voting, whatever we need.
Laptops or they're your personal?
I have a town laptop.
And yours?
Town.
Okay, yeah. Well, just that, you know, there's always the question, a legal question about whether you're using a personal device.
Yeah, no, 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 everything's on my town laptop.
We would provide if we provided.
Once you use your personal device, it becomes, yeah, no, so everything's town.
Yeah, if we provided a fixed, um, fixed tablet, then we could, um.
Each of us, I think, has an iPad, so we could potentially, you know.
Yeah, you would have both options. If you didn't wanna use that tablet and you still want to plug in a laptop, I wouldn't exclude the use of.
I'm just saying, we could have outlets and places to put wires through and.
Yeah.
Keep it neat that way.
And Nick, we can, um, work to look into what would work well with the new system.
Of course.
Too, with the voting and, and how.
Yeah.
I don't know what that equipment quite looks like or, you know, whether it's a program that's uploaded, so we're gonna get involved with that with IT and. And the audio visual group, um, to see how that, what that will look like for the future. Did the consultant coordinate with the chief about the safety measures?
We haven't gotten that far.
Report that we were supposed to get?
The chief?
Yeah.
No, we haven't gotten that far at all.
So one of the things he had said was like, how far, something under the front of the dais place and had to, but I mean, so those are just additional features.
Yeah, that's good to know. Um, again, very early, I mean, you s- you see there was seven different layouts here, so. Now that we have what I'll call the preferred layout, we can get into all of those nuanced details.
Well, in the village as well, police department, because they actually respond to this building in emergencies, first respond. I think when our, we push our buttons, it goes to the village, right?
Any other questions on the boardroom?
Nope.
Next up, I brought just an update on the selections, the finished selections for the West Hampton Center. These are printed, so it's close, but obviously it's not as good as the printer's representation of the colors of the actual materials. Not much going on here. You have a picture of the exterior. It's darker, it appears darker in this picture again than what we actually selected. But, um, it's great.
Yeah, I have to follow.
Interior, we have porcelain floor tiles in the lobby.
Why porcelain floor tiles?
Yeah, in, in the main vestibule area, um.
Just as you first walk in.
As you first walk in.
I'm just, they chip, they crack.
Guaranteed not to do that.
Yeah, they, um, met with Peter. Peter was comfortable with them.
That's what he picked out.
He's the man.
He is the man.
Looked at what was easiest, what's gonna last the longest and what's the easiest to maintain and what's the easiest to maintain.
And it's textured, so it's not like you're, it's not a smooth, um, porcelain tile. It's. Yeah, more of a sandy texture to it even. When it gets wet, it actually gets a little more.
Frippy.
Frippy.
Better to hold the dirt with.
Yes. Uh, the youth meeting rooms and offices are getting blue carpet tile. The multipurpose rooms, uh, will be furnished with the vinyl active flooring, rubber backed flooring, if you will. As will the teen game rooms, um, you know, casework, just standard brown wood with the countertop. And a contrasting white to kinda match the porcelain tile. Epoxy floors in the kitchen and radio room, standard gray epoxy floors. And the, um, restrooms will again have porcelain tile floors and subway tile walls. Um, subway tile walls will be tiled to the ceiling on the wet side and half tiled with drywall and paint. On the non-wet side. We can add some color with the paint.
And the carpet on the square, so it gets stained or loomed, we can just take up a square and replace it.
Just make sure they get extras.
Yeah, we're getting out of stock, so there will be extras.
You'll probably never find it again in five years.
And that's it. There's not much really going on. You have the doors on the, um, on the bottom right there. And most doors will be full view, so that is just the surroundings of the doors. Most will be, um, full or half viewed, so it surrounds the doors.
What color is the building, the exterior? Is it like a gray?
It's a lighter gray than what this picture shows. This picture is very dark. But yes, it's gray exterior, white trim with like a slate type of.
It's almost, um, the New England gray.
It looks very nice.
Nick did a wonderful job.
Yes, we anticipate breaking ground in December. Breaking ground will be your tree clearing. Yeah, it's, well, so let me.
Thought we were.
How do you wanna, how do you describe breaking ground? So there will be work on the site prior to December.
What when?
Ideally, early November, late October, but that will be survey layout, getting that type of stuff in order and actually mobilizing to the site. Can't start knocking down trees and clearing for the excavation until December because the bat will. So that is when you'll see machines rolling and excavations happening in December.
If you wouldn't mind, Nick, before all that happens, maybe for September, for September, you would wouldn't mind just joining for a quick update meeting with CAC West. I know you met with them. It was a very helpful meeting. Everybody really appreciated your your time and your presentation. If you could maybe be there to just kind of give an update on where things are going.
So what?
We'll get it done.
No, 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 we can't break ground. We can't start even clearing until December because of the longer bat restrictions.
Well, there's not much clearing to do, so again, I don't want to.
It's like brush.
Yeah, it's mostly brush.
Yes.
Because the trees on the west, most of the trees on the west side stays.
Correct.
And the stuff in the front, it's all scrub brush and I think there's a couple of trees where are are going to stay there.
The beginning of any project like this type of project, you're going to have a couple of weeks where work is going on that you're not going to necessarily see. If you guys prefer to see an excavator and some work being done for your preference, I can have the contractor start some work, so it's more of an. So it it looks like more is going on, but generally speaking, they they're going to have to do survey layout. They're going to have to locate any existing utilities, start putting in the proposed utilities and the temporary utilities. And then again, the first thing is clearing and rough grading the site.
It's more important for me that they just do it at the proper times and.
But yeah, you you're not going to necessarily see an ant an ant farm with, you know, four excavators running right off the bat, but there will be work progressing.
Once it gets going, it'll go pretty quick.
Excuse me?
Once it once it we get going, it's going to go pretty quick.
It's a hope.
Because we got the contract, not like the contract we had before.
That is our hope. We're working on it.
Yes.
Feverishly.
A deadline.
Any else have any other questions?
Nope. Any other projects you want to, since you have the floor?
No, it's top of my head.
Okay.
Thank you.
Shelter is on schedule for right around today. Met with them earlier this week. They seem to be happy with our progress. That's the next big one.
They said they think they might be able to place all the dogs and accommodate the cats.
The bunnies, right? Right about the bunnies.
So I'm going to start my update first if I could because Nick met with some of the people from Franco. We went over the Maritime Park Plan. Some of the misconceptions have been, you know, what we were actually doing, things that were promised that weren't really budgeted for or even possible with the DEC. So Nick did a great job of kind of putting everything in order for President Franco, so she knew exactly what the process was going to be moving moving forward on the Maritime Park.
How about updating us?
So we are still waiting for the DEC to issue their permits. They move at the speed of DEC. Our consultant has been calling them almost weekly to try and get updates. It's I mean, we ran into the same issues with the round pond improvements. They they they're going to get us the permits and issue comments when they want to.
But did the consultant finish the design for the pier and the kayak ramp? So everything's ready to go once we get the DEC permit?
And that's what we spoke to Angela about.
It's the same trouble we're having with Bel Air waiting for the permits.
Will call somebody?
Yeah, sure.
There's nobody to call there. They have very they have different offices throughout Long Island with different divisions. So one division might be good, but you're waiting for the other division to issue their comments. And then one division might issue comments that then affect the other division's comments. So now the other division was okay, but now they have additional comments.
We're not building a bridge, you know, it's a little kayak launch here.
Angela, because they had visions of grander there that DEC would never approve. Like a legitimate waterside walkway through the marshland.
Well, that was sold to the public by somebody who shall not be named.
Maybe there's something there, but you know, we're not talking about that yet.
No.
Yeah, I thought. I don't know, Rick, did you want to ask?
No, that was if Nick, I mean, he's going to be come to a Franco meeting to actually kind of back up Angela because there were things promised over time. These visions they had were pretty grand and but there will be a request. I think you'll have a meeting down the road with them to see what we they could do for the next steps. Whether it be bathrooms or clearing areas and stuff like that. So Nick got a little bit of a heads up on that.
I remember when I first got here, I said, I want to see the plans for the, you know, along the river. Oh, there are no plans for that. Oh, okay. I thought there were.
How are we coming along with the plans for the with Tom, the site plan for the transfer station in North Sea?
I'd have to check. I'd have to check with Tom and.
He's supposed to be giving us a overview overview what we expect and what we he's going to show us how the North Sea Transfer Station is going to look like with the glass crusher and the.
Oh, that, yeah.
The tire recycler, mattress recycler and and in now.
We did get really good news from PSEG. PSEG seems they seem willing to bring three-phase primary electric into the site. When we bring three-phase primary electric into the site, that will allow us to put the lead tape pumps, the proposed cardboard baler and the glass recycler all on three-phase electric without step-down transformers and conversion transformers and everything else.
Save a lot of money.
I don't know if we save money so much, but it it removes equipment that.
Yeah, you don't have to buy the equipment.
Needs to be maintained and replaced. And then lastly, the Hampton Bay's bike trail, for all intents and purposes, is complete. The final walkthrough with the state and our consultant NV5 that for their own reasons, the state does not allow us to attend their walkthrough. They walk through separately.
Really?
Yeah, we do. So as the project sponsor, we walk through with our consultant and we comment. There was one sign that I requested they remove because it was blocking a stop sign. And after we do that, then the state walks through and once the state signs off, that project will be complete. They moved the sign. I drove by this morning. That meeting is supposed to happen late next week, I think Thursday. Do that, it'll be done.
That's very exciting.
Then we're going to be tearing down a few more buildings.
Yeah, Jackie reached out to me. Not Jackie, Emily reached out yesterday. There's a there's a stable.
Yes.
You know about the stable building and a little shed?
I think there's two sheds and a stable.
Where's that?
Is there electric to the stable? She hasn't gotten back to me yet, but.
I not I I have no idea.
It was in Noyak, right?
Yes, and there's I think a couple more in Flanders too at that.
The stable and the shed is tailor-made for us to cooperate with lease management and highway and just bring that thing down.
Yes, and saves the town and its expedite. It's done in-house and the guys like doing that.
But but we couldn't do in-house the public safety building in Hampton Bay, so did we go out to bid to get someone to do that?
We are developing the plans for that to put that out to bid hopefully next week. And not out to bid next month. Yeah, that was so I walked through it and I took a look at the building and then I asked Deputy Highway Superintendent Brager to take a look. And it's a large building with a large basement and everybody felt it was best to leave it to more of a
professional.
More of a professional outlet that has bigger excavators, bigger trucks and the ability to get it out of there quicker than.
Because you have to reach way down inside.
Yeah, it was. Yes, there were complexities to that that we didn't feel comfortable taking on, essentially. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks for all your work, Nick.
Sorry to put you on the spot.
He's got to get used to it. So, Rick, why don't you continue with?
All right, so Watermill CAC meeting this week, you know, the usual concerns about traffic and actually signage has become a big thing in Watermill with the shop set Watermill. So Ryan was on top of that and also just some questions about the cannabis dispensaries and the zoning that we put in place. I was clear that the zoning we did was not to eliminate a cannabis shop, but more to be inclusive on the character of Hampton Bays and increasing the length of the downtown. We also tonight, oh, I want to thank Cindy because Cindy's been covering the Flanders CAC meetings that coincide with the Watermill, so Cindy, thank you for that. And concert tonight in Good Ground Park, Wood, I said that right, Wood Vibrations. So it is acoustic and it's a pretty good show. So if you want to mellow out a little, go to Good Ground Park around seven o'clock tonight. Thank you.
I didn't mind when I was Nick.
Okay. Let's see, yesterday I had a Pine Barrens Commission meeting and among other things, we're hiring a retaining a consultant, SWCA environmental consultants to prepare a community wildfire protection plan for the twenty-nine thousand acres of Southampton area of the central Pine Barrens region. So that's exciting that that's getting going and just that there's an emergency preparedness meeting that the county is running tonight at the West Hampton Pines Community in West Hampton.
So did they talk about increased fire roads or anything through the Pine Barrens?
Yeah, that's going to be part. I mean, that's something I think is important.
Does access access was tough for them?
So who pays for that?
The Pine Barrens Commission.
Okay.
Yeah, it's about hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, I think, was the price. But it's good and, you know, I know the county's looking at it too, so everybody has to come together with all their ideas and come up with something. Who is it for me? What about you, Michael?
Very busy weekend last week. A lot to actually update, but I'll just I was invited just on a community note by the Peconic Bridge Walkers to take a walk in Hampton Bays. It was really nice.
How often do they do that?
Poclock Bridge. They do it every week, multiple times a week, so that was very nice, joining them. I will also say that I took part in the Gabreski Community Advisory and Review Board this week, taking Tommy John's place as the vice chair of that committee. You know, there was, you know, about ten to fifteen people who came out, spoke about some of the concerns that are still ongoing. The committee concluded that we are going to send a letter to the FAA, keeping in mind that the Gabreski Airport is a county facility that the FAA controls. So the federal government, of course, but we're going to ask the FAA if we can have a staff person at the control tower there throughout the evening hours, midnight hours into the early morning hours. After eleven PM, there is actually no one there and it's outsourced. All the guidance to the pilots is actually outsourced to other other airports that have this have the staffing. So, you know, a lot of people are complaining that there are are planes flying at low levels at two AM, three AM. And if there's somebody who's, you know, more localized there at the airport, they may be able to provide some guidance into taking an alternate flight path that isn't so disturbing to the, you know, the general peace of the community. So I thank legislator Welker for continuing that as well as Suffolk County Executive remain. You know, sometimes when administrations come in, new administrations come in, some committees stay around, some committees get cut. This committee, you know, has been maintaining itself and continuing and both of them are working together and I think it's an important thing. So we'll see how that letter what that letter leads to.
Okay, thank you. Cindy, what's your update?
I did have I did cover the Flanders Riverside, North Hampton CAC for Rick this week. Actually, it was a great meeting. We had our full committee meeting there and we also had, I want to say there was probably about ten community members that showed up as well. Had a lot of great discussions. We they gave me their list of their top bladed properties in all three of those hamlets. So Ryan Murphy's working on that. I've been looking at it to see what we can do and Sean Cambridge has also been helpful with that. Because some of those properties have been in, you know, they've been in court, they've been fine, they've been. So we're just kind of trying to see how we can further kick that, you know, to get resolution rather than just continuing to have these people in court. And then they also had some traffic ideas that I am going to be meeting with Tom Houghton and also Charlie McArdle about. So that was good. I will not be at our meeting on Tuesday. It's actually in almost four years, the first meeting I will miss, but I figured with no public hearings and a very light agenda, I've asked Rick to actually read my my resolutions. I was asked by Kim Laubie, the director of HUGS, to join her and her staff at the Community Anti-Drug Coalitions of America Midyear Training Institute, Community Coalition for Community Coalition Leaders. That is in Nashville, so I will be with them. It is at no cost to the town. So I will be away at that and I hopefully have some good information when I get back, meeting with them. And there's law enforcement there and community leaders and you know, as we try to form this coalition, it's it's a it's a great way to, you know, meet with other people about what they're doing in their communities as you know, cannabis is now legal and and, you know, we look for prevention for our youth and so I look forward to doing that with them.
Yeah, great. Have a great trip.
Thank you.
All right, well, if there's no other remarks, then I move to go into executive session for acquisitions and litigation and then close.
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Thanks, everyone.